Mrs. --
Mike.
You told me that, didn't you? Mrs. Myers, will you please go the roll?
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Zittahar?
Here.
Mrs. Coghill?
Dr. Rammer, would you please pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undaunted and indelible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Rammer. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Do board members have any per se, any modifications to the agenda? Okay, and we'll start with public comments.
Eric, anything?
Public comments. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, board members and community. Just two quick things this evening. I'm going to draw your attention, board members, to your folders, green folders. Two items in there that I would like to update everybody on. The first one is graduation this Saturday. You have a document, actually two documents in here. One has some details with a map, and also you have an orange parking pass that will get you in that back lot. And I encourage you to be there early. As you know, this is our one attempt here at North Central College for this year. We don't quite know the traffic patterns and what's going to be happening. I think it's going to be congested. And so I encourage you to get there early. And it will be a fun day with both Wheatmoreville South starting at 9:00 a.m. and Wheat North at 2:00. So I know the staff at both high schools are in final preparation, going over all the details. If you have any questions, please remember either call me and/or Mary Lou, and we can get to the answers to you. But I think things are pretty clear, and if you need any further information, please let me know. The main topic of the report this evening I wanted to talk about was the other document you have in your green folders, and it's the timeline for the multi-district appeal to Illinois Virtual Charter. So if you wouldn't mind pulling that out, I am going to point out a few details. Before I get to this particular document, I want to just update the board and the community where this situation currently is. Yesterday, the Senate voted to approve House Bill 494. So it's passed both the Houses and the Senate now, and it is on Governor Quinn's desk. I did talk to our Luda representative, Diane Runtlich, today, and she did tell me that they are pursuing Governor Quinn to help him understand the urgency to get this bill signed into law so we don't have to continue through this process that you have here in front of you. So if he signs that bill, anytime between now and the next steps in this process, we believe that this process then will be stopped at this time because that particular law puts a one-year moratorium on all virtual charters. So we will see how that proceeds. Hopefully, sooner the better. Our understanding is that Governor Quinn is in support of the bill, so it's just a matter of him taking action and signing the law. So if and when, until he does sign that law, though, this is the process that we're going to follow. Last week, I attended the commission hearing down in Chicago on Wednesday afternoon, and Dr. Rammer was able to sit in on a conference call on Monday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, midday. I was tied up and wasn't able to do it. So we have been in lots of dialogue with the commission about this particular process. The one thing the commission did decide to do last Wednesday was to split the hearings into 18 different hearings. There was a recommendation in front of them to have one hearing by the charter school. Obviously, they only wanted to do one. Well, each district clearly represented themselves and made sure that the commission understood that every district wants their time in front of the commission to share our own concerns and why we voted to deny this charter in our community. So the conference call on Tuesday was to work out the details that you see here in front of you, and I want to point out a couple of key items. We are following this process. Right now, we are on letter G, and letter G is that our appeal, our district's responses to the appeal is due on May 28th. Since we filed our appeal early on there in April after we voted to deny it, we have to file our appeal by May 28th, which is Tuesday. So staff, including Dr. Rammer, Fay, Joanne, Bill, and myself, we have been working on this quite a bit in the last week and a half, especially in the last few days, trying to get our response put together. Also, Brian Crowley, our counsel, is putting the entire document together. We will have that appeal ready to go by next Tuesday, the 28th, responding to the response from the Virtual Charter School. So that's kind of the next steps. A couple of other, you can see here, there's two other events that are going to happen as part of this appeal. One is an interview. We have an hour of interview time with the commission where they interview us, asking us why we do not, why we deny the appeal, why we do not believe this charter school is appropriate for our community. Our time has been designated. If you look over at the second page, you will see they put together a schedule. Our time is Friday, June 14th, and we actually will go to St. Charles to have that meeting. The yellow is the districts that are hosting the meetings. If you see, we're CUSD 200. We will go to St. Charles on Friday, June 14th at 10:30 in the morning. So that is when we will be having our time in front of the commission and be interviewed by them. That is not our opportunity to present. We will simply answer questions and, I assume, bring clarification to the commission on why we denied the charter. The second event is the public hearing. If you look down below on the second page there, we are with the group that will be at Batavia High School on Wednesday, June 19th, and our time is at 7:00 p.m. at Batavia High School. So they will have four locations for the public hearings, and this will be our community's opportunity to share with the commission their input on the charter school. So actually, I did talk with our PTA today and also our teacher association, who both, I know, plan to participate in that, and I'm not sure about anybody else. They had been made aware of this, and I know they are very anxious to participate if it gets to this point. So these are the two dates that we have in front of us. Friday, June 14th at 10:30 in the morning, and then Wednesday, the 19th at 7:00 p.m. will be our hearing time. So it's been a very interesting process as this has played out. Lots of discussion, lots of detail about that. And then finally, if you look down that front page, you will see that the commission is required to make a decision by July 16th. Okay? So we will know if this process proceeds where we stand with the state Charter School Commission. One of the things that's going to be very interesting to see, if they do move to overrule all of the local boards or our decision, then we will have an option to appeal that decision in court. So that will be a decision that will be in front of the board after that time if we are overturned. Any questions about the next steps in the process? And remember, this is all for not if Governor Quinn signs the bill anytime between tomorrow and July 16th.
It would be for not if, for one year.
For one year, that is correct.
I had the opportunity to meet with one of their, the non-for-profit district officers.
Correct.
He's relatively new to the position, but has great credentials. He's former board member of one of the Naperville Schools, and was on the State Board of Education, was the chairman under Edgar, and so on. So I, you know, they have some serious people that are representing that. Now, he has not yet a lot of exposure to it, and, you know, I will be talking to him at some point in the future, get a little more insight into where he's coming from.
One of the things that I believe, you know, the, even the VLS board, I'm not so sure that they even knew a lot of the details. That's my understanding in some of my conversations. I think that's a good point. I also know, you know, remember, we had one of the board members here that evening. If you recall, he didn't have a lot of answers to much of anything, if board members recall. And that's been kind of the pattern. And really, what's happening is, I think, one or two members is running the show along with the vendor. And again, we saw through that, if we remember pretty clearly. So it is something that we will, you know, certainly continue to follow, and I'll keep the board updated. Any other questions about the process and the details of what's going on with the charter school situation?
I did have a comment and a question, actually. I was down at the IASB Board of Directors meeting, and Jesse Ruiz is a current school board member on Chicago Public Schools, but he was a State Board of Education member who voted to have this organization come into the Chicago Public Schools. So we had a little discussion about that, and he said that, you know, they were lobbied pretty hard at that time by the mayor and some other people. But he has since followed up as a member of the Chicago Public Schools to say, "How are they doing?" And the answer is, "Not so well." So he's got both perspectives on this now. He won't have any input into our decision, but it's interesting that somebody who was responsible for bringing them in on the advice of, you know, certain parties, now, from his perspective, having to deal with it, is not as pleased with it. So I just, that's one comment that's of interest to me. Secondly, I was just wondering, though, in terms of the interviews and such, who is it that's going to be representing? Is there a whole contingent, just you? How does this work?
Yes, that was part of the discussion on Tuesday during the conference call, and I had heard this previously. We are going to, we originally thought we were going to have four people that could sit during the interview. But I guess the Virtual Charter had asked, they wanted like, I don't know, 15 or something? Is that correct, Dr. Rammer? I know you were on the phone. I heard that from others. And they agreed to allow for five. So we will have five representatives to be able to attend the interview on June 14th. My suggestion, I've been talking with Brian Crowley about this. Obviously, it's, you know, there's always, you know, decisions to be made. I would suggest one board member, roughly the board president. If not, you know, and if Barb is not able or can't, then certainly anybody could do it. Myself, Brian Crowley, that's three. And then I believe, you know, the other two, we definitely need to have faith there because the educational component is the most crucial. And then either Dr. Rammer or Mr. Farley for the operational side of things, the financial and the operational side. So that's who I believe, you know, that would be our group that will attend the interview. You know, we have talked, and I think Barb is prepared to represent the board there. So, you know, we will certainly plan our time effectively and efficiently to be, to be able to speak and, you know, represent the district. So thank you for reminding me of that. I forgot to mention that. So it was interesting, they wanted to bring a whole entourage of people, and the commission did make them hold to a limited amount. So we will have that group at that time.
Just a point of clarification. Rosemary, was the outfit that Mr. Ruiz was referring to as K-12, the private operator?
Yes.
As opposed to the shell from the virtual online?
Right.
Yeah, there's, actually, there's some data. You know, the Chicago Public Schools, if they have this K-12.com as a vendor, it runs around a couple of their charter schools, one more than one. And there's some data that's pretty clear that's real bad, real poor. The performance is not good at all, and multiple, you know, data points. And so I think that's what he's referencing. He actually, they did a report, I believe, and did some follow-up on it, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Well, they have the same as we do, you know, similar to ISAT and all that. They call it "performance review" or something like that. And actually, he had pointed us to that originally, so that's where we had some numbers. But, you know, I did tell him that they continue to refer to themselves as the award-winning noted, you know, virtual school in Chicago, and other people continue to refer to him, refer to them that way, I think on the basis of some magazine article that was written early about them. So I really feel that's something that needs to be debunked because they're constantly going around touting the fact that they're this premier virtual school in Chicago, and they're actually not.
You know, as we prepare our responses and our time in front of the commission, there's a couple of key themes. One is, we are a performing district, and, you know, our community has high expectations for any school. And if this school exists in our community with our tax dollars being paid for it, there's high expectations. Quite frankly, I don't believe VLS has any sense to what goes on in District 200, none. I don't believe they, they know, I really do not believe they have, and K-12, because of some of the responses and some of the things, how they responded. And they say in their response that we have ongoing parent problems engaging our parents in our schools. That's the furthest from the truth. That is flat out not true, and that's why they put it in the response. It says it in there. It talks about that. So there's just, it's, it's, it's not, they just, all over the place, don't have any sense to really what goes on in our, in our local schools and our community. And that's why this is such a disappointing proposal that was put in front of us. And again, I know board members are aware of that. Any other questions on this topic? Okay, I conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Okay, we have one.
We have one action item, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Do I hear a motion to approve this personnel report?
Sound route.
Put by Mr. Roman.
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Swanson.
Is there any discussion?
Mrs. Myers, will you cover the roll, please?
Mrs. Zittahar?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes. Motion passes.
We have one.
I'm not used to this thing.
Watch, white.
I know. We have one discussion item tonight, and have to review our board goals from last year and discuss goals for this coming year. So I don't know which reasons on the rules.
Watch the discussion.
It's just discussion items. So if, there's some materials in your green folder about that.
I have the three.
Do you have them?
I have the process of current goals and the part of the process. Would you like me to put up?
The process, please, thank you. Okay, for Mr. Matheson and Mr. Paulson, this process is essentially a duplicate of, I don't think we changed anything from last year. It's just a process we go through every year to set our goals. If you had a chance to review it. Do you have any questions?
Are we talking about? Are we reviewing the vision, mission, we believe statements first and then the goals? Or are we talking about the goals now?
We'll go through this whole, we're going to go through this whole process.
Okay.
So we'll do the mission, vision, beliefs first, and then. Okay.
Can I ask the question? Are we actually setting that, are we actually determining our goals tonight? Or is this a preliminary discussion to determining their goals, since normally we do it a little later?
This is a preliminary discussion to get, get our, this is like round one of our three-step process. So tonight, we'll talk about this, and out of these goals will come, out of our discussion tonight, will come a draft, maybe, of our board goals, and then out of that, we'll come the superintendent goals. And that will, that process will finish up the latest by July. So that's where we are. So would anybody like to comment on the mission, vision, beliefs?
Yes, I would. I would strongly suggest that we give, is that, whatever?
Turn the speaker. Just turn it away.
Okay. I would strongly suggest that we reevaluate our position on the budget on technology. I think the preliminary data that was presented a number of weeks ago showing the, with our increase, offset by, you know, compared to those of other districts, we're still on the bottom rung. You know, and I truly believe that that's not where we need to be going. We need to find those dollars somewhere and get more into the middle tier or above or something.
I think that that is coming in just a little late in the discussion because what she's referring to now is that up there, which is our overall vision, our mission, and our belief statements. So the idea is that eventually our goals should all relate back to those things. So we just need to affirm, are we good with those foundational statements at this point? It's step one. I think you're at probably about step.
I would want to know, you know, one of the, I have the belief statements there, you know, related to what you just said. It does say, "Technology must be an integral part of the instructional program." So certainly, we can develop a goal, but, you know, as Mrs. Swanson said, I think, you know, one of the first steps here is, we want to make sure that that vision and the mission and the things, the belief statements are in line, and then we can develop targeted goals. Okay?
Finally, a suggestion would be to rephrase that to say, "Technology must be a larger integral part or a more significant integral part of the program."
I have, I'm good with the vision, good with the mission. I have two comments regarding the belief statements. And the first one relates to technology. I just want to, I'm wondering if we should propose changing it from an instructional program to the learning process? Because I think, or maybe the instructional program and the learning process? There's a lot of talk in the campaign that how critical technology is to learning and to student achievement. So just a possible amendment to that, just, "Technology must be an integral part of an instructional program and learning process?" Just an offer for discussion.
I think we've got our direction and the current viewpoint there, so whatever.
And then the other question, the comment I had is, well, because I always draw the attention to the facilities. "We'll maintain facilities, support the instructional program, and promote student learning." I was just going to propose changing "learning" to "student achievement"? No? Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm fine with it.
It's okay, no.
Mrs. Swanson, do you want to?
No.
Okay, we have gone around and around when we put this all together about student achievement versus student learning, and we've used "learning" because achievement can, can mean, you know, needed here, whereas a learner may be able to go higher or may not be able to go as high. So learning is what we're all about. And so we've used "learning" throughout, we had a, and it was a very conscious decision, so.
I'm fine with that. I agree.
The other thing I was going to say regarding technology, and I think maybe that is a statement, that maybe we need to rethink how we phrase it. The reason it was in there that way, as I recall, is at the time, technology was kind of like a standalone piece. You know, there was, there was everything we did for the students, and then there was technology, which was viewed by some as a tool for the teacher, by others as something that the kids learned how to do, but they didn't necessarily use in their learning. And so I think the idea behind that statement was to simply say that technology now needs to become part of what the students use in their learning in addition to learning how to use it. And I think that was the reason for that statement, but we maybe already crossed that plateau, and I think what you're suggesting is maybe we need to think about broadening that statement or making it meatier. For instance, Dr. Harris has often referred to it, it's really infrastructure at this point. So I think that's what you're trying to get at, is that it is just really, or maybe one part of it, is that it's ubiquitous. We need to consider it as ubiquitous. But, so I agree with you that maybe that statement needs to be updated and broadened for where we are today.
I'm sitting here thinking as I'm listening and how to wordsmith this a little bit. I can certainly bring back, you know, think about how to, you know, it's hard to do it on the fly here, but I hear, you know, the desire, and if it is the general consensus of the board, to update, I think, update this statement and understand where it sits today. Because I think when that was probably originally written, what, six years ago, maybe? Five, six? It's been a while.
Eleven, thirteen.
Been a while. So I'm not sure the right wording here, but it's something along the lines of, "Technology must be a primary focus of the learning process," or something in that arena. I, it needs, you know, based on, like you said, Jim, I, you know, obviously, you want it as a high priority, correct? I think, right?
I agree. I really want it as a high priority. We have to, you know, inservice it, we have to get the equip it, and we have to get it more integrated into the system. You know, whatever way you want to say it, you know, if we must say, "Throw more dollars at it," well, I mean, that's a simple way for me to say it, but, you know.
You just asked, yeah, correct.
Whatever, you know, the wording, the thought is what I'm trying to get at, so how significant that. I think that we are further behind than we should be in that area, and that's, I guess, the point I'm trying to get at.
I will wordsmith something here, and we can bring that back as a change there, if that's okay.
Let me, let me, let me pull that, Dr. Justine.
Sure, go ahead.
One of the things that I would like to see, and then I want to talk about maybe the process for changing this, but, you know, we talk in our social, emotional learning about safe and secure and caring environments. And so if we are going to make some changes in these belief statements, I'm wondering if we should insert the word "caring" into that statement as well.
Which one?
It's the two down from the technology, safe, secure, and caring. Unless you have a, you have another word you're thinking of could put in there, but I think that's what I'm hearing from all that work. Yeah. Now, in terms of the process for doing this, you know, I'll take the direction of the board, but when these were put together, these were put together based on a fairly substantial community engagement process. And there were focus groups conducted, and surveys sent out, questionnaires pulled out, and then all the information from that was brought to a writing committee who then wrote these, and we adapted them. So whatever you would like to do, if you would like to follow a similar process to make these changes, we can make this part of a bigger process, but if you think we should just, you know, ask staff to kind of capture what we've said here tonight and go with it. And then what we ought to also figure out is, if we make this one little change, how much is it going to cost us for all the materials we have printed? And it just, I'm just thinking about the banner, but is that about it? Because everything else, we kind of?
It's easy.
It's minor.
It's not like changing the logo, okay.
I guess my thought would be on that, if this was done in 2006, you know, that's, how many years ago is it? I'm tough with numbers here, let's see, seven years ago, you know? So I mean, you know, again, I, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to get a thing cast in stone that's not a little bit transitional every year. I, you know, I think, again, the thought of public hearings and, you know, input from, you know, I think we need to be able to modify these goals on a kind of a regular basis. You know, so I think that I wouldn't suggest any of that, kibbutz, you know. But, you know, I think, again, it's tricky words, but I can't overemphasize, six years ago iPhones didn't exist. I mean, so, I mean, you know, that whole area is so changed. And, you know, to not give it regard is really a problem, so.
In my view, these are not substantive changes. They're tweaking maybe a little bit, transitive. I don't think, some people may be upset or insulted by the fact that we didn't insert the word "educational process" with the technology element or the word "caring." I think by and large, I'm comfortable making these changes as a matter of pre-communicating this mission statement and vision statement more expansive.
All right, that's what I was thinking, that I wanted to kind of let everybody know what the process was and, you know, see what they wanted to do. what the process was and, you know, see what they wanted to do, so thank you, yes.
So, when we put together, you know, a summary of this, we'll just tweak those two, and certainly, and we can send that out and try to, you know, wordsmith that until it fits the expectations, okay?
Yeah, in some future, maybe when we, if it's ready for the next meeting, we can put it on the agenda, look at it again if we want to adopt it, but we will need, I would say we should take a board vote to adopt that again, like we did to give it the same kind of credence that the original did.
Absolutely.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, then staff will have obviously some major input, as will some board members, so it'll work together in a small sample of what we did last time.
Yes, absolutely. All right. So, the next step would be to review last year's overarching goal statements and revise them. As you can see, on the next page are the district goals. The three overarching goals are we will increase student learning and mastery of 21st century skills. District goal two, we will attract and retain highly qualified staff. And district goal three, we will achieve long-term financial stability by managing district resources prudently. There are any.
I would give considerable.
Sorry?
Okay. I'd give consideration of, you know, we've talked a little bit about strategic partnerships. I talked briefly before the meeting about the, you know, the numerous school districts we are involved with have foundational type, strong foundations that support them, and I would think that we might want to give that some kind of consideration here, potentially help solve or finance some of the technology issues. So, I guess my thought, I don't know how that fits in the goal, but I think it's more of interaction with the community, alumni, and so on to form strategic partnerships.
My initial thought on that, certainly, you know, as I'm thinking, it might fall under that goal three, you know, as a, as a target for the board to be able to reach out and revitalize, I would say, our current foundation. We do have the new 200 foundation that currently still exists. I would say it's, my opinion, has been pretty dormant, you know, but as far as a separate goal, I don't know that that would be a separate overarching goal, but it might fit in under one of these others that certainly could discuss that. You know, that would be my initial thought. I don't know, Mrs. Watson?
Well, I hate to be your fan club tonight necessarily, but, but actually, if you recall, the last time we talked about these overarching goals, one item that we struggled over whether to incorporate into everything or to have separately was communication with the stakeholders, involvement with the stakeholders. I was one that felt like that could be, that should be its own priority and have some attention put specifically to that. Eventually, I think everybody felt like that was sort of maybe expanding too much and that that could be incorporated into these three other overarching goals. I guess I would still argue that there's a place to have that have its own focus as a fourth overarching goal that has something to do with, you know, increasing our partnership and communication, or keeping a strong and healthy partnership and communication with the community. And something like what you're talking about could fall under there, could fall under finances. So, just to refresh people as to that discussion that we had last time.
I recall very much that discussion, because I was in agreement with that. And I think Mr. Paulson, when he was campaigning and running for the board, mentioned how he wanted to expand community outreach efforts and seek to find partnerships, keep it sort of available, field group, for example.
You were listening?
Actually, I was.
He wasn't running, so.
Yeah, I was taking cocaine snuffs.
I have somewhat of a radical proposal to make. I think we've had a policy of trying to keep our goals down to three, because that's more manageable to come up. And I'm wondering if we could have a separate goal that talks about community outreach, establishing relationships with community foundations, partnership with community groups would be one goal. And I would move what's now our second goal, we will attract and retain highly qualified staff, to make it within district goal number one, because that goes to increasing student learning and mastery of 21st century skills. I think as a third goal, we need a financial goal, a balanced budget, whatever else we can agree on to embellish that. That's my thought for the board.
So, you're suggesting modifying goal three to address community partnerships and community engagement?
Actually.
Or maybe it's two, sorry.
I would make that, I would make that two, and then move what is out two as part of goal one.
So, you're still trying to keep three goals?
Yeah. I agree with that overall goal of three goals.
I think the thing is, once you, if you get more than three, it gets real challenging for the board, you know, to stay after it. If you can agree on three targets that you want to collectively work on, and then fit the issues underneath those, I think that's what we, what you're referring to. So, I clarify, so I, I think I got it right. What you're saying is, goal number one, which was what you would recommend keeping the same, goal number two would change to do something about pursuing community partnerships, and something in that.
Just giving an engagement goal.
Yes.
Okay.
Partnership, engagement, involvement.
Okay. And then leave just the third goal, the financial and the financial stability as their target. Is that what you're suggesting, Jim?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, but one other, right, when I see the goals, I guess the first question I'm going to ask is, how do we perform to these goals? You know, I think, what's our unit of measure? So, but my point is that, that if we achieve these goals, then we could, you know, potentially move some off, move some on, and so on. So, without having a unit of measure, I think it's pretty difficult to independently look at these right now and say, you know, these should be repetitive. Because if we've achieved it, maybe we, you know, we're done with achieving, we could replace with something else. So, I think it's, again, you know, the goal needs to be measured.
The overarching goals are the, are the long-range visionary goals, and those were put in there to guide them, the specific goals that are measured, that are underneath the year. So, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to abandon increasing student learning and mastery of 21st century skills. That is our goal, and it is going to be there for quite a long time. So, so that's the distinction that's been made here, and we're using the word "goals" all throughout, because we've gotten into trouble before using goals and objectives, then ends and means, and, you know, so we're just stuck with the goals. And those, those big district goals in bold that you see are the overarching goals that drive everything that's underneath it.
Okay, I understand that, but I think, again, at some point, I'd like to have accountability to the goals, you know, whether it's tonight, it's not that evening.
We do.
Okay, but I, okay, I haven't seen it, I guess, is what I'm trying to get. And I'd like to see those at some point in the future, so we know how to set goals in the future, and we tweak them and so on.
For example, Jim, under the overarching goal, we will achieve long-term financial stability by maintaining district resources prudently. Goals we wanted to reach, consistent with that overarching goal was to review our legal services, even if necessary, to replace the law firm, to achieve that goal. So, that's one of the implementing goals we implemented this past year towards achieving the overarching goal. That's an example.
And when do we establish those? I forget the words you said, the, this being the overall goal, there are some sub-goals I'll call it.
Well, we're headed there tonight.
Okay. What, is part of this conversation or what?
It's part of this conversation. Right now, we're talking, this is, right now, we're talking about the umbrella goals, okay? The multi-year umbrella goals, and we're reaffirming them or altering them, and we need to do that first before we can set goals for this coming year-specific measurable goals. So, does that clarify it for you a little bit?
And the agenda has a place, we're going to talk specific. Okay.
Yes.
Well, two minutes. First of all, I just, to clarify just a little bit for both Mr. Madison and Mr. Paulson, the verbiage we have here under these overarching goals, you'll notice our board goals, and those are goals that the board itself, its own processes are trying to obtain. However, there are also superintendent goals, which you don't see here, but they were part of this contract. We just don't have the sheet right in front of us, but it's public, it's part of the contract. And those are probably more of the type of goals that you're thinking about that's more measurable even than the board goals are. Because our board goals tend to be process goals, whereas the superintendent goals tend to be more achievement type of goals. And so, you'll see those as well, and those will be much easier to evaluate as to whether we've achieved them or not, so.
Yeah, the superintendent staff goals tend to be very product oriented, or, and the board, or big picture goals tend to be more process-oriented or policy-related types of things. That's just typically what happens. Now, not always, like the one that, you know, the legal services, that was pretty straightforward. You know, that was certainly a board target there, and, you know, staff worked on it, but the board certainly was involved and made that decision moving forward, so, along with staff, but it was part of it.
And I hate to monopolize other things, but I really wanted to go back to being a proponent for four goals. I know three is like a magic number, the number shall be three, as they say in Monty Python, but I really think that four is, in our case, we keep trying to shoehorn four things into three goals. And in my opinion, last year, we tried to shoehorn in the community engagement, and we didn't do as well on it. And I would hate to shoehorn in highly qualified staff, first because it's a very important piece to us, but secondly, that was one thing in the last big community engagement, that the community was loud and clear, it was their top priority to have a highly qualified staff. So, if there was any wording that I would not want to take out, it's a priority of highly qualified staff as being obvious there. And, you know, you could put it under other things, but in general, and I understand it gets harder, but you know what ends up happening is we put in two little sub-goals instead of one under each, so, just my opinion.
I mean, I'm fine if we have four goals, I can differentiate between three and four. As I, as I did research this, district goal one all revolved around students, district goal two all revolved around staff, and district goal three, as I read it, really talked about resources, all of our resources. Yeah, and I'm thinking, okay, finances, facilities, trust. If we were going to talk about community engagement, which I like to talk about in some of this, it seems to me that that could be embedded within district goal three, which talks about maintaining financial stability or just playing stability, and then having individual goals below that as the board goals. The one comment I did have on district goal two, which I did like, I just wanted to, I was going to suggest we insert a word, because that's what I did earlier in time, but when I read, "we will attract and retain highly qualified staff," it read to me like there was a, we're missing in there. We want to develop highly qualified staff as well. So, we want to attract those, whether they're coming from other places or, you know, from college, we want to retain them as they're highly, become highly qualified, but we also have a responsibility as a board to make sure they get developed further. So, whether that's grow or develop, I kind of highlighted that, "we will attract, develop, and retain highly qualified staff."
I mean, it's a good suggestion. I always think about if I'm not developing somebody or helping somebody develop, I'm not going to retain them. But I think it does mirror it, mentioned in here as a critique issue. I don't think it hurts to put it in there.
I would agree. It's been implied, but it's good to clarify, and certainly that's, that's a focus of it.
And I don't mind, I mean, I'll weigh in on the four goals. I don't mind having four goals if, if that's, you know, a pleasure for the rest of the board, I think, you know, I do agree that if we, if we take district goal two and fold it into one, I mean, it belongs there. But, but it stands out as an emphasized need, and I think we still have some, a little bit of a ways to go in terms of professional development and our retention plans and all of that. I think, I think we have more work to do on that, that I think leaving it as a separate goal might not be a beheading to do at this point in time and say, you know, we're little these down to three once we kind of get where we want to be, but maybe for now, we need to have a, we need to have four. I'm not on the numbers either, I mean, I think you have as many goals as you have things that you really want to emphasize.
I would very happily concede to that point. I was forced to shoot for four last year, but.
Maybe you would let me have it?
Yeah, you wouldn't let me have it. Now you have, let me have it.
I think the four is ideal, my thoughts, the second goal, we're talking about staff, you know, we have the whole topic of the new performance-based unit of measures and so on, so it's become a more significant item that will be effective in 2016. And then the communication with the stakeholders, I don't know how we can not include that as a goal, so I strongly think that we should use four.
Okay, so.
Mrs. Madison?
First of all, I apologize, being late. Real estate is crazy. It's wonderful. I, just from a little bit, you know, since I've come in, I love the word "develop," definitely think that the staff piece, I mean, that, they're our biggest resource, so we, they should be highlighted, and, I mean, it'll probably always be a goal, never-ending. And a financial, and I'm fine with four. Did you, so, just so I understand, are we saying just keep what we have and add communication as a separate one?
I'm not sure that I'm hearing that we want to add a communication goal. I think we want to have a goal for community engagement. And community engagement and partnerships, you know, because communication, you know, you could think of it as one-way or two-way, but engagement is more, more encompassing. So, who wants to write that? Do we want to write it right now? Well, I'm just, if somebody had the words, if they're tripping off somebody's lips, I'll take them, otherwise, okay. All right, so we'll, we'll come up with the strategic partnership goal, that'll be part of what we do. Okay. So, does that cover kind of everybody's comments on the overarching goals? Okay, so, I guess we should go through them and look at how we did, and if we want to carry over any of the 2013, 2002, 2013 goals. So, under district goal one, attend appropriate training as a board, including perhaps board's self-evaluation. I think, I think we had a number of people attend training, but I'm thinking maybe we should carry this over and do another, maybe something in the summer for our operations.
So, you're, okay, so that was the first bullet point under the first board goal, right? So, ensuring board decisions have a positive impact on the district 200.
I'm sorry.
So, the first, so, so.
You're right.
I'm good with this first statement, and then having that point as the action item or other goal underneath the board goal is fine with me. Now, I think, seeing as how we have four board members within the last two years, I think keeping that as a constant level of concerted effort is valuable.
You know, just as a side note, I think, you know, several of you have attended several different sessions, but, you know, to really have an understanding as a board member, what it, you know, to increase student learning, there is a lot of training opportunities and a lot of thinking goes behind that, and that, you know, and that's where the learning component as a board member sits, and I think that's why that is important, why it's been there. You know, one other thing, you know, there's always the governance piece too, and, you know, our, even our new law firm has indicated to me, and certainly if the board's interested, they would be willing to do any type of workshop on governance too that goes along with that. So, I just share that at this point, because it is something, you know, the IASB has always been our primary provider. However, our new firm also told us that they would, that's part of However, our new firm also told us that they would, that's part of the attainer fee that we agreed to, and they would be happy to come out and do workshop settings on any topic, on whatever, you know, topic it would be. I just share that as, you know, as a reminder to the board.
I have a question on the Goal One, 2013 board goal, last item, reviewing existing committees and determining what structure is needed. What committees?
We have board-level committees, that's actually been a goal that has been accomplished. We have board committees on finance, teaching and learning, facilities. Those are standing committees of the board, and it's in board policy.
Who are the members of that? Who are the members and how are they assigned, I'd ask. I'm not aware of them.
Board members have usually chosen which committees they want to be on, and the president appoints.
And when does that occur?
That will occur as soon as we get done with this goal-setting process.
I now understand the point.
So if I could just sort of fill in a little bit here, part of what happened in the past is we had a policy with standing committees, but it was really outdated. We hadn't done those standing committees since even before I was ever on the board. The committees had gone, by the way, so. And so we just sort of did things ad hoc. Then, a couple of years ago, we formed some ad hoc committees to address some specific goals that we had at that time. That seemed to work pretty well for us, and we decided to move ahead and re-establish some standing committees, as well as, when needed, ad hoc committees if we've got some specific goal that is various, like, for instance, the comprehensive review of District 200 legal services. That's just kind of a one-year in-and-out, one-and-done sort of committee. So, once the goal-setting is done, then the president knows what kind of committees we need in terms of the standing and the ad hoc, and then that's the point at which the committee appointments take place.
I assume that these are public meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Now that we've been recently trained on the public sessions and so on.
Absolutely. We post them. If you go on our website and there's the board stuff, you'll see we have committee meetings that we post. Two board members primarily sit on each committee, and we post the agendas, they're into all discussion. Community's invited to attend, and we do have people show up and, you know, listen to what's going on in the committee meetings. And I think, as Rosemary said, that our board policy a year ago was very outdated, if you remember. We actually addressed it, corrected it, approved a new board, revised policy, and we're in a much better place now. So, it's, now, I believe it's just going to become part of practice, don't know if it needs to continue there or not. It should just become part of practice. We updated, we knew our policy was outdated, so...
I just have a question. Is there any value, I mean, now that we've agreed upon the four overarching goals, is there any value in us taking us offline and having each of us really look through these in detail and offer bullet points to each of those elements rather than go through this process as just an idea? I mean, we can vet them out, once everybody's had a chance to think through them, if we do agree upon the overarching goals, just a point of practice, maybe?
I personally would like that idea, it's just that, again, being fully disclosed here on some of the issues that are coming up, it would be helpful for me to take a look in that approach. I don't know that I did that from reviewing these earlier or something.
I would suggest we go ahead and look at, I think that's a good point, I guess, I mean, certainly defer to the wishes of the board. I do think it's important to take at least some time here, which is to look at what we had last year, at least have some discussion about it, and then, then maybe go back and think about, okay, which ones do we think we need to stick with, which ones we don't, and what do we want to add new? Okay, I mean, because I do think you need to go through these, because otherwise, if you try to do that on your own, it's hard without board input on that. Because especially for our new members who may not even be aware, like we're kind of going through here, sharing, filling in some blanks, so you know where we're at on some of this stuff.
The only thing that I would ask to be helpful, and I understand, you know, people are kind of at different places in their board experience and everything, but I would ask that we just sort of march down the list and not jump around, so we can get through everything. And then, you know, when we're on that, I want to then bring up your questions, and then we'll discuss it. But let's not, let's, I feel like we're starting to move around, and we're not going to get through this in a timely fashion if we keep doing that. So, anyway, I'm back up to the first bullet point underneath, attending appropriate training as a board. I was hoping we could do a, the board workshop this summer, right? Did Mary Lou send out, she never sent that out then, the August dates?
Yes, she was waiting for tonight.
Okay, she was waiting for tonight, okay. All right, so we'll be getting out some dates where we can maybe have somebody from the ISB come and do a board self-evaluation, board processes, you know, that green sheet, the green folder, maybe go look at that, revise that, and help us work better together as a board. So, we'll put, that'll be one of our goals for this year, activity, to build a better board. The second bullet point, developing a formal mechanism for ongoing community engagement. I think we did a little bit of that this past year, but I think this is one that could definitely go under our new goal four.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay. All right. The next one, a board meeting calendar, which specifies annual recurring intended items. I'm not sure that we got to that.
No, there's one that exists, but it just hasn't been looked at and updated for what our current, you know, schedule of things is. It was written probably about three or four years ago, I think Andy put it together. So there is one that exists, but it just hasn't been updated and certainly hasn't been published. Wouldn't be a hard thing to do, but...
So should we leave that as another goal for this year, do we think that would be helpful for the community, so that, you know, if I know the budget, if I know, let's say, if I'm looking at the calendar, and I'm interested in, let's say, when Faith gives her report, and I want to know when that is, would that be helpful to have that whole annual calendar to look at the year as a whole and see what topics are going to be when?
So let me understand this individual point. We've already published the board meeting calendar, so now this digs deeper and says that particular topics are going to be covered in particular months during the course of the year, on an annual calendar. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Let me ask this, do you think that falls under Goal Four? I mean, I just asked that, because are you really talking about communicating to the community here? In my opinion, that was my initial thought. That's the purpose, correct?
Yep, that was my understanding of the purpose, is that when we talk about property assessments in December, we certainly want public know that it's one of the resources to do a draft budget generally in February or so. You hear about curriculum in October, if you don't mind? Yes?
So that would fall under new District Goal Four?
Right. Okay. And then, the final one that we already discussed that has been accomplished, so do we need to do anything on committees this coming year? Good with that. And I think especially, I have a couple of ideas kind of ruminating, if that's the right word, about committees, but I think if we're going to do a community engagement, then the structure, any new committee structure or community engagement, any more committees, you know, may come out through that community engagement process. The community will tell us what they want and what they want to be part of. So, good with that. So that can just sort of like drop off, not be carried forward.
Again, I'm a little confused about the committees. They consist of two board members and the general board.
No, it's the staff.
Staff.
It's the staff and board. However...
However, yeah, go ahead. However, many of the committees have subcommittees, which then involve community members. For example, Mrs. Khan Hill and I are on the teaching and learning committee. I'm sorry?
You were, that's correct.
No, we still are, until I reappoint somebody else. Okay. Anyway, those committees have subcommittees, one on social-emotional learning. There are teachers on that committee, there are administrators on that committee, there are parents on that committee.
Wellness.
Wellness is another one. The math committees, the common core committees, typically those all have a variety of people as input. The committees at this level are typically policy-level committees. So that's why, right now anyway, there are only board members and staff, because you're dealing mostly with policy issues.
Do you want to talk about finance? No, you go ahead.
No, and I think we've had discussions, and we've had examples from other districts in the area, Rosemary and I, where there's serious considerations going to be given about building a public involvement and participation within the committees.
Finance committee.
Finance committee, yes. We've not structured that, it was in Santa Claus examples, but that would be more, they would be represented in that committee level, not a subcommittee per se. Did I say that correctly?
Well, it was one of two models. One was to actually have them on the committee, the other model was to have them as an advisory capacity that may meet several times on specific topics and hand it off to the committee. But in any event, it would be that. And what we're talking about now are board committees, which are not to be confused with superintendent committees. So superintendent committees are, wellness is actually a superintendent committee. And a superintendent committee is not a public necessarily committee.
Can be.
It can be, but it's not, it doesn't fall under the FOIA requirements, just to clarify that.
I guess I got to go back up to the first one, then, I need to be trained on all this stuff.
And then we'll change it, I don't know.
So do we, do we need more bullet points under? The first one, since we took two out, right?
Yeah, but we, yes, we accomplished, we accomplished one goal, and we took out the other two. What else should we be doing as a board to?
Technology.
I'm glad somebody else brought it up.
Technology. I mean, I jotted down some notes ahead of time, I mean, that's where a very specific technology target goal needs to set. I mean, that impacts student learning, that's 21st century skills, I mean, and certainly I think we need to have more discussion about that. It's been brought up a couple of times here this evening, and I know, you know, both Joanne and Jim have brought it up in the past, and I went back and looked at the notes. So, I mean, this is not a new topic for us, but it clearly sits there if it's a consensus of the board.
Well, actually, I was going to say that this goes back to what Mr. Matheson was saying earlier, from a board, again, remembering these are board goals, these aren't staff-go-out-and-do-it goals, these are policy balcony goals. And so that would, the board action on that would be to say, what's the priority in our budget for technology? So that, that's really exactly what you were talking about, so awarding something like, review the priority in the budget given to technology, and determine whether it needs to be increased or...
That's correct. I mean, I was playing with this beforehand here, and I was looking at a couple of different, you know, options. One would be, you could talk about the budgetary piece, which clearly is a factor here. Consider technology strategy to incorporate more devices. If devices is the issue, if that's the, you know, or if it's softwares, it depends on kind of what the board's thoughts are on that. If it is devices, then I think the board needs to think about and consider, when I say consider, maybe that's not the right word, it's about the verb here, is to investigate maybe, or pursue, or I'm not sure what the verb is, you know, you have to think about that. You know, you could look at, you know, bring your own device strategy, you could look at a one-on-one solution, you could look at, you know, leasing option for all high school kids as part of their fees. You can, I mean, there's a lot of options out there, there's solutions. It's more a matter of the board taking a look at what option might be best for District 200, and staff working on that, bringing you options to consider as we move forward. So I think it's a strategic focus, and I'm not sure, you know, I haven't worked with this, but it's really in that arena from what I've heard, but I certainly defer.
I was just going to suggest, I think from the board level, we want to increase access. We want to increase access, how that's done with, whether it's devices or software or, you know, anything else. Our objective as a board should be to increase access for students to use technology as part of our, how that gets developed is figured out later on in these other...
Yes, exactly.
Then it comes to my mind, a question of who identifies the best practices that we can adopt to increase access. For example, just this past week, in Wellnet, we think there was a family that afforded iPad, the Wellnet School District said every student should have iPad, and some parents were objected because they're expensive and not everybody in Wellnet can afford it. So, I think we've, perhaps it's identification of best practices for this community to increase access or increase opportunities. I think we need to include the in-service side of that, too, the deliverers' process, you know, have to be incorporated in there as well.
And reliability should also be a target. You know, increase access, training, and, you know, stabilization, reliability. And then, but we need to, we need to phrase this in board work, because we don't, and this is, but I think what we need to do, and I'm glad that we're going to have a goal like this, but I think what we need to do is make sure that we don't get into the nitty-gritty here, that staff work, it needs to be broad, and it needs to be, it needs to say, here is our commitment to technology in this district.
So, ensure access and, what do you know, increase access and ensure, like, reliability? This is part of my responsibility as a secretary to write all these comments.
Yeah, but I write it, too.
No, but if you don't, you'll just review the tape.
I think Jim said it correctly. Long as there's some language in there relative to best practices, I think that's very important. Joanne, the parking lot component that's attached here, the topic you and I kind of raised our hands for, the student use of technology both in and out of the classroom, I think that's very important, because I'm fearful of what goes on outside of the classroom, quite frankly, and the ability and capabilities that these kids have available to them. So, again, to Jim's point, if there's a best practices scenario incorporated in there, then to everyone else's point, let the staff do their thing and bring it to us and say, this is what we'd like to do.
And it may be just me, which is fine, but the wordage of ensure board decisions have a positive impact on D200 student learning five, I am just having to think really hard about that wordage, that we're ensuring the decisions, aren't we? Is anyone else stumbling up? Because would technology be, how are you going to tuck that under there? Wouldn't it?
Joanne, you could just take out the word "ensure." I mean, just say, board decisions will have a positive impact on...
That would help a lot.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, you know, wordsmithed, in case you can. I think, you know, what we tried to do was use verbs to start each one of those sentences. I mean, that was the format, if you look down along there, there's verbs on each one of those, it was kind of a formatting thing. But I understand what you're saying. You know, I think the intent is, no matter what the board wants to do here, they want to make sure it has impact on student achievement, student learning.
Do we not just have control over policy, the board? We don't have the, our decisions lead to policy.
Right.
So in reality, it's to ensure board policy to have a positive impact, we might be absolutely that.
Yeah, that's good. That's good.
True.
And we could also, I mean, the way we could phrase a technology goal would be to say, by providing the resources to have technology at whatever level we agree we need it. And that's basically, you know, our decision point, a lot of it is with technology at least, is budgetary. You know, in setting direction for what it is, you know, we want to be done as well.
I think when we talk budgetary, there's other sources of revenue there we have to look to, potentially. So, I mean, again, it's more than just our current revenue stream, it's the foundation concept, you know, grants, et cetera, that might be helpful in that regard as well.
Well, also fees. Well, also fees, I mean, we could look at all, you know, as I said, I think that's something, that's staff work, we can bring back, you know, recommendations, solutions, you know, there's a lot of different ways to tap revenues. Just a matter of, and it may not be through our general budget, it may be through other resources. But if the board's target is to, you know, to head this direction, then staff will, will bring ideas to you and solutions to try and make that happen. Okay?
Okay, anything, anything?
So it's two bullets?
Yeah.
Let's go with that.
I, I will tell you, I think, you know, we've got some, as the board knows, we've got some very heavy targets in place already in the curriculum and instruction arena, you know, that, that are not really board targets. I mean, with the PLC initiatives and Common Core initiatives, I mean, we're, you know that, and we'll continually update the board there. I would say, if, my, my opinion, that the board has two targets here that sit there in their own development as well as the technology theme, that's, that's a big challenge, and that's gonna have an impact. And that would be my thought, unless there's some models that board members feel fits in that arena, we certainly can bring it back.
Whole Common Core is to help develop 21st century critical thinking skills, so I agree.
So I take a reading to move on then to District Goal Two. I know we're working on that plan for retention plan. Should we keep that as a 13, 14 goal?
Yep, definitely.
One other target, just so board members are aware, we do have the CEA contract that we will be negotiating this school year coming up with 13, 14, that is our support staff. That's all of our clerical and custodial and support staff contract. I'm not sure if you want to put it there or not, but it is something we will be working on, we will have board, you know, involvement on that, and just want to make sure that board members are aware of that.
To follow up on a point, Paulson, I hear, which has become kind of a benchtop for me as well, just enhancing professional development for the staff also, following this, we've talked about it, you know, subcommittee, I've heard that theme repeated a number of times in other venues.
You know, the ongoing professional development staff is a, is a constant target, and I will tell you currently, a couple of different areas that's, that's, you know, the most important focus right now. One is in the whole Common Core PLC instructional arena, okay? That, we're, we just finished year one of, you know, that implementation and that process. That is a journey, I say that to staff all the time. And, you know, if the board, board wants to put it in as part of their, their own goals, I mean, I can assure you, it certainly could be a superintendent related type goal, or, and it will be staff goals. Now, the, the technology piece, as was referenced by Brad and I, Jim, Jim, was, you know, the training component along with the IT stuff. That is a conscious thing, it would be something that, you know, we've started some things, but certainly we can enhance that, you know, in that particular arena. It would impact every classroom in the district. So I, you know, I, I'm not sure if there needs to be something in general specific, but we have a lot of, you know, staff development that's in play right now across the district. Oh, ELL, we're doing, I'm missing some things, PSYOP training, differentiation, I mean, we've, we've got a lot of different training initiatives, you know, to meet the needs of students and some of our programming across the district. What else am I missing off the top of my head?
We just finished all the reading framework, training, and all that, we opened the report card training, stand up bits, and the week of learning stuff just went out tonight.
Yeah, we have a whole week in August that is dedicated for professional development for staff. We just, we just finalized that today and sent that out to staff, we certainly can make the board aware of it. But it's a, you know, a conscious targeted effort. A lot of those activities are technology related, so many of them are PD related technology classes that'll be happening the week of August 12th, is what it is?
Well, I'm happy to include it with a superintendent goal.
Yeah, and that's fine. I think that's where it sits, since my.
So that would mean, I'm reading District Goal Two and Board Goal, and it just seems to me there's a little bit of a disconnect there. The track, the developer team, highly qualified staff, and then a board goal with underneath that is just talking about district leaders. Is there, should there be an expansion of that board goal term to be more encompassing and just district leadership? Or is that a sub-goal that's in the superintendent's goals?
It is, that was a target that the board had focused on this past year, that was , and this was in this past year. Because that, we had spent, the previous year, we had the teacher's contract underneath there, because that was a significant issue, that was time factor, an issue that was in play at that time. So it's kind of varied from year to year, that's why I mentioned the CEA contract, because there is commitment there on behalf of the board to successfully complete and negotiate and implement, you know, a collective bargaining agreement. Leadership was kind of one of the focuses that, you know, was, you know, still in play. Let's just put it that way. I don't think we've arrived at that yet, in my opinion. I think it's something that's ongoing and will carry off, definitely at least until the summer, maybe, maybe further if the board sort of chooses.
I personally think with the CEA contract and to, and to, you know, solidify that plan, I think that's gonna be significant with the other things we have going on, and unless there's something that's more urgent, I don't see that right now that, that the board has to do. I think the staff has a lot of things to do, but the board, you know, is looking at, I'm not sure. Okay, let's move on to District Goal Three, on term financial stability. The comprehensive review of label services, as Mr. Roma mentioned, has been completed. The meeting communications, I think we can now put under District Goal Four.
See, I'm telling you, we needed that for.
We got three and they're going four now.
Yeah.
That one's done.
And, well, we, we looked at Jefferson, so I guess we could say that that was accomplished.
I don't think that one by itself, I mean, I think the preemptive statement, determine, determine community goal, support resolving major facility issue, this can end there, but it can remain a goal. I don't think it has to be specific to Jefferson or this building or anything.
That's a good point, thank you, we'll do that. We'll just take that off.
Yeah, I mean, my only comment's there too, and I would agree, I think the board needs to have some big picture discussion here about facilities in general. We know we have, we have a plan, we've identified needs, we've talked about it performance contracting, we've talked about it, you know, in other, you know, we've tried a referendum, didn't happen. We, we still have some pretty pressing facility needs that we are gonna have to have some significant discussions about moving forward, and how we're gonna, you know, try to identify and target some of these. That, that's why I think, you know, somehow that needs to, we need, you know, develop determining community support for resolving major facility issues is a real good goal that probably is gonna be there for a while, that'd be my guess.
So, the determining community support, to me, sounds like it goes under that little goal number four.
I think that, that item, what I was referring to earlier is for the board to understand the, you know, the, you know, the facility issues that are confronting us, the cost that we anticipate in the normal cycle of renovation and so on, is the, is the goal that I'm thinking should be here. That's, you know, it's not community support, it's, you know, it's not specific to Jefferson, it's not specific to this building, et cetera. It's, you know, the whole process of evaluating the condition of buildings, how we're gonna maintain them, or recycle here.
I don't know how that, how would that be different from what we already have in place, the facilities can be put together?
Set here.
Maybe this is, maybe as I'm thinking here, instead of determining community support, remember that's where we were a year ago, we were waffling on where we were at and what might happen with that, those particular facilities. Maybe it's more about evaluating solutions to resolving major facility issues. I mean, that's, you know, we need, I don't know if I got the wording right, but it's basically, we gotta look at the whole big picture here to determine how we're gonna proceed with, with aging facilities, which we, we have across the district. We, you know, we have a laundry list, and we need to try and figure out some solutions moving forward.
And prioritize?
Well, they're already prioritized.
Yes.
One of the ways we've identified the past decade for some of them is through performance contracting, but that's not the be all and end all, certainly through, because a number of these, a lot of these projects have nothing to do with increasing electrical efficiency, electrical usage efficiency or heating efficiency, they're just, they're more structural in nature.
I mean, we have large blacktop projects, we have roofs, we've got, I mean, we've got some pretty significant infrastructure issues that are not injury related. That was one solution, and we'll continue to pursue that, energy, because that's a good way to get at some of those proactive things, but we do have some other brick and mortar type issues that we do need to figure out some solutions.
So it seems to me that this goal underneath District Goal Three would be to define a plan that comes out of Board Goal Four as relates to community engagement.
Right.
And we have the list of needs, we have the different categories, we have priorities, but I don't know if we really have a plan until we listen to our community, until, until they tell us, whatever, whatever process we use in part of community engagement, what their priority should be. So I think, you know, developing the plan is critical to achieving District Goal Three, and the feedback we get from community engagement can help us, help inform us on how to act on that.
That's why I suggest evaluate solutions or evaluate community recommendations or, you know, I mean, that's something the board's gonna have to weigh in on and make decisions on how we move forward.
I'm just good with that too, do you want to make solutions?
Yes.
I'm good with that too. Okay, okay, good. Okay, and then, one of the things that we have left to do, unless you wanted to wait for a different time, and I don't know, you'll like to tell me how comprehensive this is. So far, we've, we've done a comprehensive review of our audit services, comprehensive review of our legal services, and the third thing we were gonna do was the comprehensive review of our architectural services. So do we want to do that all this year, the community engagement thing, or do we want to wait another year? I don't, I don't want to put too much on our plate like we did last year, we didn't get a lot of it done, I mean, we got quite a bit done, but, so I don't know what, what are your thoughts on that? Mr. Roma was in the legal review, did the audit review?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Gabianni and, and who else was on that team?
Me.
Mr. Johnson.
Since we probably don't have any major architectural needs this year, right?
We don't have any significant projects, you know, in play. However, you know, we always, we have ongoing architectural services that, you know, anytime we do any type of project, and we have ongoing architectural needs, they have to do approvals, you know, each year. I mean, we do, you know, engage our architects all the time, you know, in projects and so on. So I mean, those services there, although we don't have any significant capital projects where they would be in the design mode and those types of things. So it would be more of the standard, you know, daily types of work, not in, you know, big picture, you know, design work.
I, I think we should wait on evaluating or determining if we want to reevaluate the district architect. We should find out what the outcomes are of the community engagement process, what the, whatever the new version of, whatever.
Goal number four?
Whatever the outcome of Goal Number Four is, and the plan that comes out of that, we will then be able to be in a position, whether we think, you know, searching for other firms or determining we have the right firm in place to do that, should be a result of whatever the outcome is of community engagement, whatever that plan becomes. So I don't think at this point, it's something we should tackle this year until we know what the community tells us we should focus on, and then determine which firm, what firms is appropriate to do that.
Just to throw out a counterpoint, since we don't have a major architectural projects planned for this one year, would be an ideal time to take a look at architects. And I'm not sure exactly what sort of input we'll get from the community with respect to what sort of architect we should obtain. Mostly architectural firms we would view are broad-based firms that do a variety of things. I'm saying all this knowing full well, to do an architectural review is gonna take a lot of time and effort.
One thing I will tell you, we will have to lay out a very specific RFQ to be able to, you know, vet that out. And without any type of a project at hand, it will be, it'll require some work, different than even, you know, auditors have a very specific function, attorneys have a very specific target funding. Architecture is a little broader, and they have some ongoing things, but, you know, I certainly defer to our architects sitting right here. I mean, Brad, you could explain the day-to-day services as compared to like a, like a construction project, there is a difference.
The reason why I think it's worth waiting, as somebody who responds to those RFQs, to just do a general RFQ for no defined project or no defined role would be not very valuable to us to find the right firm for the effort. If we get through that community engagement process and say, the community tells us, this is what we want you to go focus on, that will allow us to conduct a more targeted review of potential firms to find the right firm for those projects. It doesn't mean we have to change, we could have multiple firms up. There's other school districts our size that have multiple architects. But I think just going through an RFQ process to go through without a specific reason of what you're looking for is, I don't think it's gonna bring the board as much value as we think it might.
As long as, you know, was there any chance that we do try to do Jefferson in that year, and then we'd be scrambling?
I think one of the reasons we want to engage this community participation is to see what the community thinks about a new Jefferson, so that whatever plan we develop is conform to that community feedback. So I think we need to probably work that process through this year, board to make a decision.
I don't think going through a community engagement process to evaluate what other versions of, versions of plans would be on Jefferson would prohibit us from deciding a year from now, if there's a bigger package of work, we could have, you know, a different perspective on reviewing RFQs. I don't think maintaining our current architecture firm, participating in that community engagement process focused on Jefferson and other building issues changes anything in the future. We gotta come up with a solution. Certainly, I think community members should be part of that, staff, in-house staff, the architect can be involved. I don't, I don't see a problem personally with maintaining the current relationship as part of that community engagement process and determining what the outcome is.
It's one of the, depending on the scope of what we do with, you know, involving the community here, and then we haven't gotten into that, but, but one of the things we obviously would put in front of the community is, is the capital development plan that our current architectural firm put together, okay, based on all of our current facilities and the issues. So we would certainly, at least from my perspective, want their expertise on what currently exists. Because if we went out and found a new firm, they don't have that prior knowledge, you know, from where we may be sitting right now. Now, it doesn't mean that we would then, as a board, let's say we decide we want to, you know, do A, B, and C. We could, as Brad said, we could go out then as a board and say, okay, now we want to find a firm, or maybe an architectural firm, and who's gonna be the best firm to help us design these, these needs? Does that make sense? So I think we need to be careful here and not set ourselves up, because here's what I could see happening. If we went out and did this now, and we brought in a new architectural firm, then we would be behind the eight ball there trying to, you know, get our things in order to be able to put together a question maybe to the community for facilities, because we wouldn't have a lot of that pre-work in place. It may be very, very difficult to do that. That would be my caution.
Seems to me that facilities and Jefferson and other, other building issues is gonna be a major component of this, but I don't think the- a major component of this, but I don't think the architect has to be the leading coordinator of this potential community engagement effort. There's other, doing in-house, there's other professional consultants that do that. We don't need to find a different architecture or firmly have the right architect to facilitate that process. We have other resources.
I guess my concern is that Jefferson, you know, it's going to be way down the road because, you know, the community and just thinking how long it took us, now a lot of the language was done already with figuring out what teachers, what school needs for the programs and so forth and student needs. So that's been done, but then to, you know, have to start square one again, I guess that would be our committee or our focus, is that going to be our focus? Or are we just, is it just going to be thrown in the pot and yeah, we'll fix up the toilets in the hall, you know, and not the whole major project event?
Well, I think there's, I think the work, all the work that's been done on Jefferson is good work. All the conversations with staff, getting the community aware has been very valuable. I think whatever next good plan comes out of this process, I firmly believe there's lots of different good plans. We just have to figure out the right plan for our community. I think that can come through the community engagement process. Most likely, I would imagine there's going to be another ballot question in terms of the timing of that. I don't think there's two opportunities in 2014. Both have different decision dates on our end. I just gave this presentation last night to the different school districts, so I know the exact dates.
It's just primary and it's a whole election.
We have to make a decision by December 30th for to go, if we were to choose to go in March of 2014 and if we chose to wait until November, we don't have to make that decision until next August. So depending on how the community engagement process folds, unfolds, how detailed we want to get it, I think we've got time to evaluate Jefferson, consider other building issues, talk about teaching and learning issues, talk about technology as part of that process and listen and engage our community in that process. I don't think there's anything lost in Jefferson given the work that we've done and the time constraints of the time, the time available to us to make that decision. So I think that a lot of that's going to fall under how we implement the goal that's not yet defined, number four. So I've had a lot of experience in doing this. I feel pretty comfortable that now is the right time to do community engagement. We heard a lot about technology, a lot about other building issues. We've got four new board members that haven't had that opportunity to sit through a community engagement process. I think Jefferson, when other, other issues come out of it, can be embedded within that and all that well up at the top into a more broad direction for the community.
Yeah, I think with 58 to 42 plurality against the Jefferson proposed, I think we really need to go through the community participation process. I'm hoping we can accelerate it so that if we can identify Plan Four Jefferson and put it on the ballot, remember 2014. I don't want to lose that, but I think we have to go through the community engagement process.
All right, any other thoughts? I think, I think we have a good list of board goals for next year. Lots of scribbles. Let's just take one quick look at the parking lot. That's the next sheet of paper. Are there any items that we think we should pull off the parking lot for next year or any items we should delete?
You should recommend how this was generated or explained. I'm sorry.
Okay, the parking lot was generated by kind of, you know, board members go to conferences and we talk to other board members from different districts and we get ideas. And these ideas come up during the course of the year, meetings, whatever. And so sometimes though you have ideas about things that, that kind of don't fit in with what you're doing right now. So just put them on a parking lot for discussion then when we set our goals. So this way, they're still there, they're not lost, they're tracked, and when it comes time to act on them, we can act on them. So there's a number of items here because I'm trying to think if we have, I mean, maybe the technology one, does that fall under technology goal?
I think so. I think that comes off because that's going to be important.
Yeah, I think that this is good. So this will be a 2013 to 14 goal.
Casar's.
Casar's done. Actually, not, boundary changes are not done. Actually, we have the six 12 master schedules and elective programs, right? I'm sorry.
Before we alarm someone on TV who just heard you say boundary changes are not done, you don't mean that boundary changes are not done. You mean the process for future boundary changes.
Well, Mr. Gabbiati said they were done. I tried to say they weren't. I'm sorry. Let's clarify that. Thank you.
But I have suggested a process which we're going to pursue with enrollment and we use the casar the numbers and we'll be looking at all those things. So I...
So you're going to develop, develop a process to approach community without proposed boundary changes and all that?
Well, we're going to develop a standing committee that's going to evaluate enrollment and will bring recommendations to the board if we believe we need to make it. I'm not saying we're in the need of any boundary changes and at this point we absolutely are not, so make that crystal clear. But to have a, you know, an ad hoc committee that's in place, you know, that involves parents, staff, and community, you know, to look at enrollment, to look at that on at least an annual basis, that's what I suggested and I do want to get that together later this summer and we will, you know, we love, as soon as we have all of our enrollment and, and details in place, we will, both Mr. Farley and Erica and I will work with that and get that going. We'll certainly want a board involvement on that, probably one board member to sit on it. And we just look over everything and then we get out in front of this stuff and not have things come up at the last minute where we have to make changes, which is not healthy for anybody, including you.
Well, that's exactly why I had on the parking lot and if that's going to be the time, then we can come off.
Yes.
We'll come off the parking lot and go on to this superintendent's calls for this year.
Are the school uniforms an issue? I don't see that as a goal.
The superintendent will agree for the record, but I certainly respect the board's thoughts.
This is why they elected me.
No, I'm going to keep it on the parking lot.
That's fine. The other two issues that I, I don't know, I guess the parking lot is some future consideration. I guess I would consider, you know, year-round school, you know, we've heard a little bit about that and the cost savings associated with it potentially. And then the other one that I would have is whether we need to address in any way virtual school type items in light of the other things going on, you know, whether we want to have a plan in place that would be helpful in negotiations.
You know, that's a great point and actually that will be one of those things we'll be bringing forward, I believe. But one of the outcomes of this charter school activity that we've been participating in is we are, staff are pursuing some different options for virtual opportunities for our kids. So regardless of what happens with the charter school thing, we are going to pursue that. But again, that's the access thing. That's the whole piece around virtual options for our kids. So you can certainly put it in the parking lot, but I can tell you that's going to fall under one of these other things that staff will be bringing forward, so.
Is that implying that's a higher item, a page one goal or, I don't know, you know, I think it's something that we need to, you know, potentially address in light of both what you're just commenting as well as, so maybe that belongs under that technology category.
I think it does. I think that's something the board will see this school year from staff, that we will bring in some options for them. Okay?
Then I would suggest we add it to whatever page, you know, going back to whatever it were, include that under technology or superintendent.
That could be a superintendent.
No problem.
Something I'd like to add to it, and it came up from one of the...
We're trying to pull things off the parking lot. But go ahead.
Okay, just keep it in there. But it came from a teacher's dinner and I mentioned it to Dr. Harris that they were interested in having summer school, that we should be offering it and, you know, it would be a paper itself with tuition base and so forth, but that it was, it's a need and they were interested in having it. So just a thought.
Well, we could put that on one of his goals too if we think that's something that we might want to get this year. But we'll put it in the parking lot. That'll be in the parking lot for now. Okay, summer school. Okay. I'm not sure where we are with the six 12 master schedules and high school start times, elective programs. I think that was, I think that's addressed, so that should come off. Because I think that was on there when we, the kids who took bad content technology courses and I think we have addressed that. So that's coming off. Rosemary, you had that scheduling evening activities?
Right. Well, you know, I think that that's something that, you know, when we get to the community engagement piece, may or may not come up. So, you know, we'll find out.
That's a great topic for the community.
Semester, I think, part of it, I think it's around the, Pierre Cadrecks. Yeah, there's a lot of these are good, good for goal, the new goal number four. You know, the Pierre Cadrecks, semester, I think, part of it, a break, who knows? Any chance we'll have time to do the guidance program this year?
I would suggest that be part of it. If we do do community engagement, we incorporate a lot of these services. These are really service oriented type things. Engage where the community sits, parents, that's my thing. We also, you know, guidance and counseling sits in the social, emotional learning arena. It is something that could possibly be more of a superintendent target or, you know, I'm not sure if it's, you know, where it sits right now as we prioritize some of these things. It may be in more of the social, emotional, it really straddles between academic and social, emotional learning. I mean, that's where, and it straddles that because there's a balance there on those staff and where their time spent and their focus.
All right, so maybe what you're saying is we should evaluate how your goals fall out and see if there's time with all the Common Core and all that other stuff, see if there's an opportunity to do that or just leave it maybe for a little more year.
If it fits is what I would suggest. I mean, I, I guess I got to take a step back and look at all this and see where it's all going to fit in, you know, with staff time, not only mine, but also my colleagues' order to the left.
Okay, anything? Anything else on the parking lot? I think we had a good discussion there. A lot of instinct here.
I like the two additions too, things we should be talking of.
Yep. Okay. What would you like our next steps to be for this?
I at least need one or two people to volunteer to help wordsmith some of these things to be able to bring back to the board at the June meeting, so whoever would be willing. Okay? It would involve probably through email, maybe a couple of meetings. We may have to meet face to face once or twice.
Well, Rosemary and Brad, is that okay? Okay, so Rosemary and Brad and then you want to, you want to sort of like draft them and then send them?
On our way graduation.
There you go, on your way to graduation, just draft them and then we'll, we'll review them and send you feedback. You probably don't even need to get them to enroll at the start.
No, I think the two of you might be, I mean, I can, you know, you certainly, two of you started and then, you know, we've done that before and then we'll, we'll plan on bringing back drafts for further discussion for the rest of the board at the June board meeting. And then we would, I would suggest that we then talk about superintendent goals and where it fits in at that time and then we can approve everything at the July meeting. Does that make sense to everybody?
Are there any reports from, are there any reports from board members? Tab is for future discussion. We have the budget command.
I would just comment briefly on that. I know at the June meeting, Mr. Farley will, and I will give an update to the board. Hopefully our revenue and our expenditure lenses will be clear. We anticipate some clarity to hope from the state here in the next week or two and so we hope to blow up, we'll definitely be planning on updating the board on budget at that time. That's where we'll get into, as long as we've, we got an idea of our goals here, we'll have some decision points to be making as we finalize our budget.
So our next, sorry.
Is it okay for me to offer another topic for future discussion since we spend so much time talking about community engagement? Can we put that in there sometime in the near future? Not necessarily in June, but, or is it inappropriate, this part of the agenda to add something? Next meeting? Is this bringing up next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, given that we're going to have our community engagement going, we'll be...
Just so that all board members are, all board members are with us, but the community is one of us, I'm bothered I can sit down with Dr. Harris Tuesday, I'm sure, a full week before the next board meeting. Before we had a meeting, we sent out an email to all board members asking if there's anything specifically we want added to the agenda.
Considered, considered for addition.
Considered for the agenda. And if you suggest community engagement, we will strongly consider that.
Okay, our next regular meeting is June 12th here at the SSC at 7:30 PM. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? None? Okay. We do have, we do have need for closed session tonight for personnel and no action will be taken after a closed session. So do you have a motion to return to closed session?
Before we do that, do we have to make reference to any, the next meeting, which I believe is a special meeting in any regard?
A special meeting on May 28th at 5:30.
Will we return to closed session?
Mr. Matheson, next. Here is our...
Second.
Mr. Roman. Mrs. Myers, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Coghill?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbiati?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mrs. Etahar?
Yes. It is true. Do you want to do this?